Do we have to lead us in the pledge today? This is the probation department, right? Right? Probation is here.
It sounds like things are...
Yeah. No, I know. I was just wondering...
Oh, I thought you were trying to figure out to match it.
No, I was just saying that they could lead us in the pledge. Sorry, you weren't in my internal dialogue.
No, no, I came in late.
Okay, good morning. How do we get the Zoom up? Yes, we're ready.
Meeting returns at 1:10.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the September 12th Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with a moment of silence. And I think we have a few today. I have one that I'll read. Shirley Howland passed away peacefully at the age of 94. She was a remarkable woman, a fierce Democrat, a 1950 UC Berkeley graduate, a trailblazer, and a wonderful friend to so many who called Clear Lake home for many years. She lived a full life, participating with amazing energy in all she took on, especially in needling Democratic politicians to be more progressive. She especially loved Dennis Kucinich and later Hillary, and stood firmly for peace and against climate change, drove her Prius covered in the most liberal bumper stickers all over the county, and set up voter registration tables at every event she could find. She never gave up the fight until yesterday, when she graciously left life. That was on Friday. She was not alone when she went, and she counted on her posse, a few faithful friends during her final moments. She will be sorely missed. In her honor, let's try to model her courage and perseverance. A memorial event is being planned in the near future, and we will forward details. And then, as we all know, today is the 80th anniversary of the Valley Fire, which changed our lives forever. There were four lives lost that day. One of them was my neighbor. We had four injured firefighters. Seventy-six thousand acres burned and 1,955 structures lost. At that time, it was the third most destructive fire in California history, but so many fires have already eclipsed that. But it really was the beginning of this new era of megafires. And so many lives have not come back together. People are still recovering. People are still hurting, and the trauma has been felt all around the county and all around the state. So I know we've got another moment of silence. Do you want to step up?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, and to the public here. And I stand before you to conduct this moment of silence also for two Upper Lake residents who were from Upper Lake area. And the names are Melinda Sue Easter Wright and Catherine Marie Perry, both of Upper Lake. Fine women and very friendly, and they passed... Kathy passed away unfortunately on August 19th, 2023. And Ms. Melinda Wright unfortunately passed away during the Labor Day holiday on Saturday, September 2nd, 2023. And I would like to extend my condolences to the grandchildren of Melinda Wright, of Madison Wright, Haley Wright, her son Matthew Wright, and her beloved husband Jim Wright. And then for Kathy Perry, her daughter, her one and only daughter, I believe, is Ms. Kelly Strong. So I want to take that moment of silence to recognize them and offer their condolences to their families and their loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gert Thomas. Another thing to add about to Melinda is that she was on the West Region Town Hall as well. Yeah, so...
Okay. Do we have any more moments of silence? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Of course, yesterday was the anniversary of 9/11, so we remember all those who perished, including the brave firefighters and police officers. And I also want to acknowledge our local Lake County firefighters, who commemorated that day by climbing the stairs here at this courthouse 28 times up and down the four flights to equal the 110 flights of the World Trade Centers. Seeing them run that and come out of the courthouse exhausted and then ring a bell in commemoration of their fallen comrades was very touching, and I'm glad I was there to see it.
We have our probation officers lead us in the pledge today.
...to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to our... Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any extra items to consider?
We do not.
Okay. Then we will move on to the approval of our consent agenda. We have a lot of items that we need to pull. I have a list here. 5.25, 5.33, 5.34, 5.38, 5.9. And do we have any others?
Can you repeat those slowly so I don't refute what you asked?
5.25, 5.33, 5.34, 5.38, 5.39.
Madam Chair, I request that we pull items 510, 511, 513, 515, 526, and 540 and 41 in addition to those.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I hate to do this, but I will pull 5.14 as well.
Okay. Okay. Does the public have any items to pull? You have items to pull off the consent agenda? Okay. Anyone in the Zoom room have items to pull off the consent agenda?
There are no hands raised in Zoom. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. All right. Well, who wants to take a stab at this?
Let's see.
All right, Madam Chair.
Oops, sorry. Madam Chair, with the exception of 5.10, 5.11, 5.13, 5.14, 5.15...
Did you say 5.14, too?
Yes.
Okay.
5.25, 5.33, 5.34, 5.38, 5.40, and 5.41.
Including 539 and 25.
And 2...
Sorry, 26.
26.
539 and 5.39 and 5.26. I think I said that one, but I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. We didn't really designate which ones will be pulled for next week. 5.3, 5.9, 5.34 will be for next week. Okay.
Which ones are those? 533 and 534?
Sorry, Lloyd, what? Okay. 38, 39, 34 will be... They're related to the budget, and so they'll be next week. The rest of them will work on today. Yeah?
Not 5.25.
We probably... We will not work on 5.25. That'll be to a later date.
Oh, right, later date. Okay. Okay. Okay, 906 item is our public input item, 6.1. And we have a form from Virginia Bautista. If you'd like to come up... Oh, shoot, I don't have my three minutes. You said it when she started. Yeah, just state your name, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Virginia Bautista. I'm here to speak about the cat overpopulation. It's drastically... It's traumatic how it has grown. And we don't have a spay-neuter clinic. For example, I've been doing and performing this service for my community for 15 years, taking cats and kitties out of the county to get them spayed and neutered. I have a full-time job, but I do this at the side. Take them out of the county. Why? Because we don't have a spay-neuter clinic. We have our Lake County... Lakeport Animal Control, which only give us one appointment per month. SPCA, three times per year. How we can help? How can we help to have a spay-neuter, affordable clinic in our Lakeport... in our Lake County? Every... It's not all about being irresponsible bed owners. It's not. It's because our county is charging a ridiculous amount of money to spay a cat or a dog. We have to help these cats and dogs. We have to help our animals. We have to help our residents to be able to afford these prices. Okay, right now, we're not going to get any appointments for in Lakeport in our SPCA. You know why? Because there is no more funds supposedly. Okay, so our animals are going to be dying there. A lot of animals are not feral, are not abandoned. It's because owners left them behind when they moved away. They moved to another house and they left them behind. Okay, so those cats converted... They get converted to be ferals or community cats, dying. We're going to be in our houses really nice and warm. Wow, those animals, those cats and dogs are dying out in the street. Dr. Richard Beckman died last year on March 2020. We haven't been able to hire a veterinary doctor. Can our board help and make this happen to have our community cat program back? Can we help the residents? Maybe we can... The county can add a payment or a fee into our property taxes. I don't mind to make a payment annually. Let's have all the county residents to make a payment into it annually to make... to help our SPCA and to help our animal control. We need a solution. We can just turn around and pretend that nothing is happening. A lot of animals, even if you like it or not, animals, is going to be beneficiary for all of us.
That's your three minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to just... One minute, I'm going to grab my...
Okay, go ahead. Hi, my name is Elaine Brown, and I'm an educator. And as an educator, we often front-load information before the test and before we teach. So I just want to let you know, on September 27th, you may be the ones that started this. There's going to be a talk on homeless at the SOBE. I'm not familiar with that theater. I'm not... I don't have the time, but I really am front-loading some information, and I hope all of you attend. At that time, more can be said. But our homeless shelter in town really needs some help. I was there for two hours and couldn't stay the whole length of the time because of the condition of the room that I was in. My former husband was a correctional officer at San Quentin, and I got to, back in the early '90s, walk into that place. And I can tell you by far, the prison was much better off than that homeless shelter. That said, I've heard that there was $38,000 from a reputable person in this community that was taken out of that homeless shelter by someone who no longer works there. And that's a lot of money. It's possibly $48,000. That'll probably be brought up. This is just to give you a front-loading of information that might come forward. There's a place in Santa Rosa called The Living Room for Women and Children. Perhaps we need a women and children place in town that's overnight as well, because that one doesn't have overnight. But I walked in there the other day to visit someone, and there was a movie on TV that had blood in it. And I've been told that a lot of words are spoken there that children probably shouldn't hear, so that's another concern. Again, the 27th, and I would like to say on the 27th, I know California enacted something right before COVID, where people could go into a place of employment, something like a store, and take $900 merchandise and only get a misdemeanor. If the county can somehow... Like, the federal and the state are different. If we can somehow protect our merchants here, that that wouldn't happen. I don't know if we can override with that ordinance. I don't know how that works. I'm just... We, the people, telling you. And also, I was up in... Recently, this weekend, on the dam up at Pillsbury, I heard they're going to, like, just not let it happen, and the water's all going to run out. And I talked to a lady named Edie up there who has a store. I haven't had the ability to research it, but they just spent $4 million on the dam last year, and now they're going to get rid of it, and PG&E doesn't want to take up... I haven't researched this. One of the turbines, they don't want to fix it, but that really affects this community and the wineries and everyone. So I just want you to look into that, and thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hansen?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name's Michael Hansen, and I just recently took a ride up and over the hill from Upper Lakes over to Lake Pillsbury, and I'm noticing there's a logging operation going on. But they have these big piles of, I'm assuming, burn piles like they do in wineries. But I noticed that they're wrapped in viscqueen, a black tarp. Are these used to set these fires? Or what are these being used for? And that's a concern for me, because, you know, we have enough pollution in our airs and waterways and our poor animals out there. And I believe this is something that should be addressed, not only by this county, but by the State of California. I'm assuming that they're using these black tarps to start these fires as an accelerant, but that is black plastic, and it's just polluting our air and waterways, and it's a concern for me, as well as many others in this planet. So I'm wondering what can be done for this. And that's about all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to that, that wood could be used for people that are in poverty or even people that want to go up there and get wood. It's usable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, during public comment, it's... We're not allowed to have a conversation about this, but you can speak with the supervisor. It sounds like you're probably up in the Mendocino National Forest, which is governed by the National Forest Service. Okay, our 6.2907 AM item, Pet of the Week. I think we have a cat. Let Steven find a new cat.
Good morning. My name is Officer Copus with Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today, I have brought Hazel. She's a two-year-old female. She has been recently fixed as a community cat, and we picked her up as a hit-by-car cat. So she had a broken... It was a part of a pelvis that was broken, but she has a full recovery. She's ready for a new home. She loves puppies, dogs, cats, kittens, kids, everybody in general. She's super sweet, and she could be a really good house pet.
Oh. Hazel? Is that her name?
Yeah, Hazel.
Oh. Well, thank you for bringing her in.
Thank you.
Good luck, Hazel. Okay, our 6.3908 AM item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. We have Supervisor Crandall.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
We brought all our friends today.
Good.
All right. So I'm going to read this proclamation, designating the month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. Recovery is near and dear to me, as a lot of my family has had struggles with addiction, substance abuse, and all of those. And I know a lot of us are affected by that as well. And so it is always a blessing when somebody actually goes through the process and comes out of it. And we do know that sometimes it takes multiple, multiple attempts, and that's fine. You know, eventually, it will happen, and then our prayers are answered, right? So I'll go from there, and we'll start with this proclamation. Whereas Recovery Month recognizes the strong and proud recovery community, the dedication of service providers and community members in Lake County who assist and support individuals from prevention services to recovery. And whereas Lake County Behavioral Health Services provides or provided substance use disorder services to 208 beneficiaries, Hilltop Recovery Services provided 261 residential treatment beds and 55 outpatient services. Redwood Community Services, Tulie House, provided residential treatment services to 65 women and 33 children. Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, and Franz House Sober Living Environment, SLE, provided combined safe housing to 49 men and women and 12 children in the calendar year 2022. And whereas, Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided 261 residential treatment And whereas, Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided mental health services to 1,153 individuals during the calendar year 2022. And whereas, nationally, 24 million in the U.S. experience a substance use disorder while 9.5 million experience both substance use disorder and mental health disorders. And whereas, seven in 10 adults who have substance use disorders consider themselves recovering or in recovery and two in three adults who have mental health disorders consider themselves recovering or in recovery. And whereas, through promotion of Recovery Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent those problems today. And whereas, recovery is possible and treatment is effective, people in recovery can and do become gainfully employed, own homes and rejoin their families and their communities. Whereas the County of Lake Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Services, Substance Use Disorder Services, Mental Health Services, Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, Safe RX, Hope Rising and Lake County Health Services urges all citizens, families, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, healthcare, education systems in Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding and action to address substance use disorder and mental health conditions in our community. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services, do hereby proclaim that September 2023 is National Recovery Month in the County of Lake, pass and adopted this 12th day of September 2023. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Jessica Paeska.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I just, I'm just gonna speak very briefly, but we're all very much aware that substance use disorder is pervasive in our county. And we have a lot, a lot of work to do as a community, but just as important as providing services and healthy alternatives to help people recover, it's also important to take a moment to pause and acknowledge those who have made the journey and who are successful, productive members of society. The recovery community is strong and I just want to honor those who continue to be a beacon of hope for others yet to come to the other side and be a part of that recovery community. And also all of, if you look behind me, you see a diverse group of individuals who are all very much present and active in the community and assisting those with substance use disorders who also continue to be a beacon of hope. Thank you for all that you do. Would anybody else like to say anything?
Laura Sullivan with Redwood Community Services, Tulie House. And just thank you for taking this time to reflect, to offer that hope. All of us standing here are proof of the journey, but so are the millions of Americans out there who do recover. So it's a blessing to watch families come into Tulie House, change their lives and watch moms go on to be moms and change that generation, the next generation. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bonnie O'Donnell and I just wanted to share with you all that we are having an event this Saturday. It is Recovery Happens and it will be at the Lakeport Park, at Library Park. And it will be from 11 to 3. So if you're interested, please come join us. There's gonna be speakers, there's going to be booths, activity booths for kids and families. And then there's also going to be informational booths for everybody in regards to what kind of recovery services we have here in our community. So we'd love to see you and join us. And there's also going to be a walk. We're gonna do a Walk for Recovery around and about Library Park. So thank you.
Thank you for having us here. My name is Richard Okino. I think that it's important also to acknowledge on this day that whoever out there watching this, either on Zoom or here, that there's a lot of stigma attacks to addiction. And I want to let everybody know that everybody, there's a large majority of people on this panel, that I went through addiction themselves. And we were literally that person that you see out there, walking around, looking like they're zombies. And if it wasn't for people in this room, I'm sitting on Board of Supervisors, people that we, that loved us and gave us hope, we may have never been able to claw our way out of that dark, dark hole that we were in. So I, I want to take this moment to ensure you that if you don't understand addiction, you don't understand people, why they're doing the things that they're doing, they're not making that decision on their own. I would encourage you, highly encourage you to gain a bit of brain knowledge, addiction science, so you could better understand your community members. Because they're just really, they're one person away from encouraging them to change their life. And there's a couple of people on this panel that, you know what I mean, are going to get master's degrees. And if you would have looked at them 15 years ago, you would have never thought that that person would amount to anything in their life. So I want, one thing, one thing I want everybody to take away from this is that that person out there that you might be stigmatizing or think shaming, they might have a cure to cancer one day. They might have the ability to do something great in this world and, and by you just acknowledging them or talking to them one day or giving them hope, reassuring them that there's a better life out there, you don't know how long that, you don't know how far that would go in that person's mentality and that, and their outlook in life. I promise you that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate what you said because a lot of times, we, we do notice these folks, especially in our county, we have a lot of people addicted. And it starts with something inside that they're hurting from or something they're dealing with or something that they have that they're not medicating. So they self-medicate and eventually the hook sinks in and then they're just basically living to supply that. It's like a parasite, this, this substance, and this is what happens. And they'll use every brain, every, you know, sort of intelligence that they can to get that substance. And I know that because I've seen, I've seen relatives that will figure out every single scheme to get the resource to get that. And I'm like, man, if they just put that towards, you know, so you're right on that. I appreciate you saying that. So there's anyone else that wants to speak or?
I'm Lori from Hilltop Recovery Services. And I just want to support what Richie was saying because I am myself an addict. I've been in recovery for 26 years. I have, in this community, we have firefighters, LCSWs, we have business owners, they are all graduates of our facility. And some of them started at Lake County Behavioral Health, some of them were shared clients with Tulie House. We've done this together as a community and, and we do recover. So thank you for supporting us.
All right. And I, and I gotta say this, I'll be eight years in recovery for alcohol. It was my choice to destroy myself back in the day, so.
I'm gonna open it up for the public before we all step away. Is there anyone in the public that would like to give comment on this item, either in the chambers or the Zoom room?
No hands raised in Zoom, Chair Paeska. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the work that you do and thank you Supervisor Crandall. 6.4, our 9:09 AM item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the 31st Day of August as International Overdose Awareness Day. Supervisor Simon.
Anyone want to come on back up?
Isn't it the same group?
I've never seen a dog. My grandkids would love that. What's his name? Okay, proclamation designating the 31st Day of August as International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global event held annually on the 31st of August to honor loved ones' loss to fatal overdose. Whereas in 2022, 79 people overdosed in Lake County, the highest fatal overdose rate in the state of California. Whereas all overdose deaths are preventable. Whereas addiction is a chronic, relapsing and treatable disease that should not be conflated with moral or personal failure, yet continues to be the subject of stigma and marginalization. Whereas every person should have access to resources that prevent overdose, including naloxone, Narcan, syringe exchange, drug testing and medication assisted treatment. Whereas in Lake County, dedicated prescribers of medication assisted treatment, harm reduction providers and substance use recovery programs work tirelessly to provide residents with these resources. Whereas local communities play a crucial role in reducing stigma, including residents, elected officials, parents, private and public organizations, hospitals, law enforcement, first responders, schools and colleges. Whereas Safe RX, Lake County, an overdose prevention coalition comprised of local agencies and organizations, including Lake County Behavioral Health, Lake County Health Services, hosted the third annual commemorative commemoration of International Overdose Awareness Day in Austin Park on Saturday, August 19th. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate August 31st as International Overdose Awareness Day and urges Lake County citizens to join in this important observance, passed and adopted this 12th day of September 2023. I'm gonna go ahead and ask anyone who wants to step up and speak.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't have my statistics right in front of me. My name is Sarah. I am an AmeriCorps Vista member working with Safe RX, Lake County. Thank you for having me today. And I just wanted to say that overdose continues to be a major cause of mortality here in Lake County and in the U.S. But there are steps we can take to reduce overdose deaths here in Lake County. For example, Safe RX is offering free naloxone or Narcan to anyone who wants it. So please feel free to reach out if you would like a kit. We'll also be at the Recovery Happens event this Saturday with lots of naloxone kits. These are incredibly helpful and in the first quarter of 2023 alone, these kits specific, or naloxone specifically helped to reverse over 20 overdoses here in Lake County. And in 2022, that was nearly 50 people who did not pass away from overdose thanks to naloxone. So these interventions, as well as harm reduction and syringe exchange, as well as access to medication assisted treatment, buprenorphine, are incredibly crucial to preventing overdose. And Safe RX, Lake County, looks forward to continuing to promote these, these interventions. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Elise Jones, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health. In 2004, I was resuscitated from an overdose. I didn't know I was taking opioid. And so unfortunately, that's become much, much more prevalent. So I just hope the community is aware that it's almost impossible to, to be too young to talk about opioid overdose because it's out there, it's available. Fentanyl has really changed the game. I'm glad, I'm very grateful that I didn't grow up in a world where fentanyl existed. It is so dangerous for our kids. And so I also want to put a face to these experiences. I am standing and I'm very happy that I was resuscitated and, and continue to contribute to the community and have a beautiful family. But a lot of people don't get that opportunity. And so I just appreciate the staff that do this, not for the love of the work, not love of the money. Nobody does this for money. And so we're out here every day, literally saving lives and the impacts are felt today. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right. Excellent. Just want to thank everybody for the hard work that's done. You know, at the most critical point in someone's life, when they're, when they've overdosed or, you know, they need to use the Narcan as it brings it back. And it affects every family, you know, at least as far as I know. It's affected my family a couple of times this year. And I had a family member that, you know, is in the, the life, hasn't decided to get the help that is needed, but was resuscitated by Narcan. So understanding that, you know, you never know when it's gonna happen or it could happen, please, as you said, if you, naloxone or the Narcan, make sure you have it, get the training, because you never know when it may come into play. And at the most critical moments, as a family member or a friend, you know, encouraging those individuals to make the decisions to reach out and to get help are the most important thing because that might be the opportunity that they need after something like this. So I just say it affects every family, every community, and we need to just keep working. And I want to thank all you warders for keeping doing this here in Lake County because it is critical right now in our times. So thank you very much. That's all that I could say.
Do we have any public? Do we have any public comment? Anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room? I'm not seeing any hands up, but I want to give that opportunity. Supervisor Spatier?
So I just want to highlight, I did request some numbers from our coroners, from our sheriff. And the numbers are slightly different, but close to the same. Here it says 69 instead of 79 for overdose. But the next highest death other than through natural causes was 27. And that was from COVID. That's a drastic difference for the number two death outside of natural causes. And so far this year, we're either at 29 or 27 and that was numbers through May and that's 27. Those are things we can change. Those are things that you're all working to change. And I'll make a request a little bit later for an item that I pulled from the consent agenda. Apologize. But we're spending a lot of money, we're seeing a lot of contracts, we're seeing the numbers either getting worse or continuing to be the same. I'd like to be more knowledgeable on what we're doing, what's really working, what's not working, what's our strategic plan? Because I'm not aware of the big picture of how we're doing everything, what, everything we do, how it plays a part in helping. And so I hope that we can engage in deeper conversations rather than just contract conversations because I think we need to better understand how we can all work together rather than depending and looking at behavioral health to make the change or the nonprofits we contract with to make the change. It's gonna take a community to make this change and this is something we can change. And so I, I just hope that we can get into some deeper conversations about it because this is important. It's, it's a number that is absurdly high in comparison to our other causes of death. So we gotta make a difference. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, ready for a picture?
There you go. Thank you. All right, send that to everybody else. Oh, wait. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, ready for a picture? So we're gonna take a short break. I think we lost our video at some point in there.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
It'll probably be closer to 15 minutes.
15 minutes. So we'll come back around at 10 o'clock. Thanks.